All right. Good evening. Welcome to the meeting of the Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners, Tuesday, September 16th, beginning after 3:00 PM. I'd like to begin the meeting with an invocation by Senior Pastor Troy Hamilton of Rocky Bayou Baptist Church, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, Boy Scout Troop 544. Would you please stand with us?
Please remain standing while I open some prayers. Almighty God and Heavenly Father, we thank you for the blessing that we have to live in a beautiful world that you've made. And Lord, we truly live in a beautiful part of your creation in Okaloosa County. But even as we thank you for the beauty and the people that we get to live among, we also lament the fact that we live in a broken world. And Lord, we were reminded of that very suddenly last week when we heard about the shooting of Charlie Kirk. Lord, we pray your comfort and your care for his family. And Lord, we are reminded of the words of our Savior, Jesus, in Matthew, Chapter 5, in which he said, "Blessed are the poor in spirit, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven. Blessed are those who mourn, for they shall be comforted. Blessed are the meek, for they shall inherit the earth. Blessed are those who hunger and thirst for righteousness, for they shall be satisfied. Blessed are the merciful, for they shall receive mercy. Blessed are the pure in heart, for they shall see God. Blessed are the peacemakers, for they shall be called sons of God. Blessed are those who are persecuted for righteousness' sake, for theirs is the kingdom of heaven." You are the light of the world. A city set on a hill cannot be hidden. Nor do people light a lamp and put it under a basket, but on a stand, and it gives light to all in the house. In the same way, let your light shine before others, so that they may see your good works and give glory to your Father, who is in heaven. And Father, we ask that you would help us to be your lights in our community, wherever there is brokenness. We know that we can shine your light when we behold you, the light of the world. Father, I pray that you would be with this Board of County Commissioner meeting today. I pray that you would give them courage and wisdom and unity. And Lord, I pray that you would bless them as they lead our county. Father, we do thank you for all of the ways that they serve us. And Lord, I pray that each of us would seek to love our neighbor as ourselves and to depend on you. And I pray these things in the name of my Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor Hamilton, and thank you, Boy Scout Troop 544. Mr. Hofstadter, County Administrator's update.
Hey, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I have nothing this afternoon.
Ms. Hoshar, County Attorney's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. No updates from me as well.
Bert Peacock.
Henry, forgive me. Nothing from the clerk's office. Thank you.
Thank you. It just flowed right out. This time we'll take public comment. I have several speaker cards. If you desire to speak, but you've not completed a card, you'll see Mr. Tomaczek in the back corner. There will be a second option of public comment at the end of the meeting. Just to remind you, you'll have up to three minutes to talk about any item of your choice. We'll begin with Danielle Gadston.
Thank you. I would like to speak about Sickle Cell Awareness Month and the opportunity that we have to recognize Sickle Cell Awareness Month. As a sickler who was raised in Okaloosa County, I have experienced such joy and love in this community. When I was 12, I decided I wanted to be an Okaloosa County Sheriff's Explorer. However, I was ill and was wheelchair-bound and on crutches. They made accommodations for me. They helped me. And I was able to learn and experience something that not a lot of people got to. And then, when I was in school, fully Okaloosa County educated, I got the opportunity to participate in so many different things. I was able to be in the Gifted and Talented Program. I was able to go to the tech school. I was able to participate as a four-year letterman doing, I'm so sorry, I'm losing my words, doing a water girl for the football team, for Chalk Town. I was able to do so much because, number one, people chose to listen. When I spoke up, I told them what I had. I told them how I lived. I told them that I would do everything that I possibly could to be the best that I was. And they gave me the opportunity to do that. So I'm just here to say thank you. Thank you for bringing this topic up. Thank you so much for allowing me to have a full and complete life here in Okaloosa County. And thank you so much for this opportunity to spread the word about Sickle Cell. Thank you.
Jonathan Razovic.
Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Jonathan Radowitz, and I'm a licensed mariner in the United States Merchant Marine Deck Department. I'd like to talk to you about the International Convention for the Safety of Life at Sea, established in 1977. Now, an amendment to this, which was passed in 1997, says that all vessels must have low-level lighting in case of an emergency. Now, this is for one very important reason. When the power goes out on a ship, you cannot see anything. You can't see two feet in front of your face if you hold your hand there. Now, you're planning on sinking the SS United States. And I've heard stated multiple times that certain rooms and spaces, the interior of the vessel, will be open to the public to dive in, like the ballroom or the engine room or other places. I feel that this is an extremely dangerous thing. Ships are inherently confusing, dark, without light. I would invite everybody from the board to please go to the ship, turn out all the lights, and try walking around and finding your way out of the vessel at dawn or dusk. This is about the light level that you will experience at the depth in which you are planning on sinking the vessel. If you cannot find your way out of the vessel within an hour with a low-powered flashlight, how can a diver not get lost or confused inside such a large vessel? This is inherently dangerous. Now, because of the Solus Safety of Life at Sea Convention, all ships that sail today have glow-in-the-dark stickers. New ships that are being built today have floor trim lighting, similar to what you'd see on an airplane. If the power goes out in a minute to a minute and a half before an emergency diesel generator kicks in, these lights automatically light up and show your way to the nearest exit. Unfortunately, at the depth and underwater, this is impossible. So I am inviting you to consider this. When we decide to leave all of the doors and hatches and windows open on the vessel, where a diver can easily get lost, confused, power goes out, and they can't find their way out, this becomes a death trap. If they can't find their way out before they run out of oxygen or before they leave not enough oxygen for them to do their decompression stops on their way up, this increases the chance for bends. And we don't have any hyperbaric chambers in the area that a diver could be flown to. The last one closed, I want to say, 10 years ago, and that was the one at the Naval Station. Thank you for your time.
Nicole Chase. Ma'am, your time will start at the microphone. If you have things to pass out, would you hold on to them and give them to us all at once when you're finished? We'll enter them into the record. Thank you.
All righty. Good afternoon/early evening to you all here and those watching online. My name is Nicole Chase, and I live in Northeast Florida, outside of Jacksonville. During the course of this meeting, I would like to talk to you about this document that I will be providing to you after my remarks. There's three things in this document calls out. Number one, the remediation plan for the SS United States, taken directly from the contract between Colleen Marine and Okaloosa County. This contract was sourced from the Vendor Registry, a website that documents the county's contracts, both current and expired. Number two, the documentation that Colleen Marine is to follow throughout the course of the SS United States project. And three, a high-level summary that I wrote from a 70-page document detailing the zinc chromate paint results that we, the SS United States Preservation Foundation, obtained from York Analytical Laboratories in May 2025. Number one, the remediation plan. Regarding the remediation plan, there's no particular call-out for housing chromate, and indeed, hexavalent chromium would be addressed, let alone remediated. The only line item addressing this point is, quote, "scraping capture exfoliating exterior paint from the ship's hull," end quote. Documentation. For the list of documentation that per the contract, quote, "Colleen Marine, Inc., will follow standard guiding documents while prepping the SS United States to become an artificial reef," end quote. Personally, I've not found anything regarding this specific call-out of both the addressing and the remediation of zinc chromate and hexavalent chromium. A stretch would be to address exfoliating paint, but again, that's an assumption, not anything that is clearly communicated. And finally, the high-level summary. The results that we, the foundation, obtained were quite interesting, to say the least. The observed value for hexavalent chromium was 4,820,000 parts per billion. For reference, the EPA standard is 100 parts per billion, and the World Health Organization standard is 50 parts per billion. In other words, the observed tested value is four orders of magnitude higher than that of the EPA standard and five orders of magnitude higher than that of the World Health Organization standard. Hexavalent chromium is, quite frankly, dangerous to marine life and to the humans who will consume the aforementioned marine life. For those in the room, if you would like a copy of this document, I would be happy to share it with you after my remarks. For those of you watching online, I highly encourage you to reach out to-
Your time is intended for you to speak to the commission.
Noted. I would be happy to address questions. And in conclusion, this compound is carcinogenic to humans and causes a number of issues in marine life due to it by accumulating in marine life. If this compound actually becomes addressed properly, I would love to see it exactly where it is mentioned. Thank you.
The clerk will be glad to accept your quick word. Mr. Kenny Fuller.
My name is Kenny Fuller, and I'm here on behalf of us poor folks. I was told by a birdie that the county commissioner wanted to get rid of the public transportation. So in Florida, the state of county commission oversight of public varies depending on how the system is structured, but it generally included financial control, administrative supervision. Financial authority in most cases, county commission maintains primary authority over the transit system budget, which include providing both an operating capital budget and directing financial control. Federal grants, federal and state grants, the county commission often serve as a designated recipient of federal and state grants fund. This gives them the responsibility to oversee how the money is spent, including infrastructure, investment, and contracted performance. Now, I have a problem because if you want to get rid of, I heard Robert, the attorney, Robert, with the fake name Trey, I heard him say that they're not into the bus business, but this says y'all are into the bus business. And if you're trying to stick that money in your pocket, that grant money in your pocket, and not put it in public transportation, you're wrong and you're in violation of 838. So I want to read something there real quick. The sheriff independent, while the commission approved the budget, the sheriff maintained independent in determining how funds are expended and has no authority over the internal operation of the sheriff's office. Law preserve. The independent of the sheriffs in the matter of purchasing equipment, personal selection, and hiring and firing, and setting salary. The reason why I read that because if they decide to arrest y'all, don't think you get any favors because you give the sheriff money and hope he do you a favor to rub each other asses. and hope he do you a favor to rub each other asses. That ain't gonna work and I don't appreciate that. Uh, you talking about the buses and this guy, he, he goes in a fake name. Y'all, his name is Robert-
Speak to the commission, Mr. Fuller.
Okay, okay. Okay, that was his name is. And so you want to go on a fake name where you can get secret money or whatever, you, you, you're gonna be in a lot of trouble, sir. So that's all I got to say.
Okay.
So I wanted to bring that to your attention, so I start fight first with the public transportation. And you're a preacher too, so you should be trying to help the poor man.
I think you should find a new bird.
Okay. What you say?
You should find a new bird. The birdie that told you that is inaccurate. That hasn't been a discussion. If anything, we've enhanced public transportation recently.
Okay.
So I think that that would be helpful for you.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Goodman?
So, in, in all fairness to rest of the board, I, I'm probably the only one up here who has said multiple times that I would get out of the bus business and I still would because I don't think it's an efficient system.
No, you, because we're not from Destin, that's why you don't think it's efficient.
I'm not from Destin either.
If you're from your friends, you, you just want the money for yourself. You, I, I see your, I see who you donate your, you donate your money to that guy. Oh dude, we turn a little smart-ass mouth, man.
Thank you, Mr. Fuller.
Anyway.
Your time's up. Thank you.
Oh, that's good.
James Maser? Mr. James? James Maser, I believe? Speaking about the West ninety-eight Collector Road, forgive me if I mispronounced your last name.
My name's Keith Masser. I live on Green Drive in Mary Esther. I attended the, uh, the West ninety-eight Collector Road Study, um, Public Information Meeting. I was shocked. Uh, Green Drive is actually a dead-end road that terminates into private property. It does not connect to the federal property. And so I was shocked when I showed up to the, uh, Public Information Meeting to discover that they were drawing the Collector Road down Green Drive. Um, I since made a, uh, public records request to try to figure out how that came to be. I got an email from the acting Public Works Director, Scott Bitterman. His email is, in searching this request, I asked our right-of-way agent to determine if the county right-of-way on Green Drive connected to the federal property. The research showed that the northernmost one hundred and twenty feet of Green Drive was vacated by the county in the nineteen sixties. The vacation resolution is attached. I don't have that with me. Uh, therefore, if the West ninety-eight Collector is designed and constructed, the county will not pursue a connection of Green Drive to the Collector. At this time, we do not know of any property that will be taken from private ownership for the project per direction of the board. Will the board go on record to state that no private property will be taken for the Collector Road and that Green Drive will not be connected to the Collector Road?
Chairman, can I speak to this? This is, this is absolutely in my district and, sir, we did have the chance to, to visit at the meeting and I appreciate you coming. In fact, um, getting to talk to you and several other constituents and looking at the, at the, uh, the boards, we were able to kind of talk through some different issues and I actually found it to be extremely helpful because that's what we wanted. We wanted feedback from the community. So I will tell you exactly what I told you then. Um, as far as Trey Goodwin or Robert Goodwin, whatever you want to call me, um, goes, no, I am not going to vote in support of taking private property from anybody. And I think that that's going to go for the properties you're talking about on Green Drive. Now, if there's another parcel somewhere and somebody wants to sell it and it's a negotiated thing, negotiations are different. If there's some other connection point somewhere else unrelated to Green Drive. But I've looked at what you're talking about. You can't drive through there. You'd be in somebody's front door or in somebody's garage driveway. I, I, I just tell you, from my perspective, and this is just me, I'm only one person, but I think you've got a very reasonable board up here and a very reasonable Public Works Director whose email you got. We're not going through Green Drive. I just don't see it happening.
Will the rest of the board go on, uh, record stating the same thing?
They may not have the familiarity with the facts like I do.
To do that tonight. I'm asking them to review this case.
Right.
Take it into consideration and make a public announcement as to how they intend to move forward.
As that circles through the process of Public Works and it comes back to us, then we'll be glad to take that up as an agenda.
What kind of timeline are we looking at for that? Because my public records request is hinging on this and it's going to be a rather substantial effort because I'm going to be reviewing emails, uh, studies and everything to try to determine how that came to be.
I don't know exactly how it came to be. I suspect it was through probably, uh, somebody with the AutoCAD and the drafting and saying, this would look like a, this would look like a nice connection point from a planning standpoint. But what I'm telling you is you've got the Public Works Director, Scott Bitterman, telling you, we're not going through Green Drive. It's my district. I'm telling you, I'm not going through Green Drive. I, 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 I don't, I can't speak for everybody else here, but I'm telling you without telling you, we're not going through Green Drive. I, I can't commit them, but I will be, i- if somebody tries to go through Green Drive and take those people's driveways away from them, you and I will be out there protesting in the street. It's not gonna happen. I don't know how else to say it. Anyway, but the chairman's right. Form and procedure, this is out of order. I apologize. The chairman's giving me a lot of leeway right now to speak on this, probably because it's in my district and it's a very important issue. And it's one that is, you're properly bringing it the right form. Thank you. To get the answer you want from the board as a whole, it has to go through the process the chairman talked about. To get my answer, I'm telling you right now what it is. We're not going through Green Drive.
Is, is there, is there something I need to submit to get to encourage the board to make a public announcement? Is there some other avenue that I can expedite this?
Historically, there, there's, that's not taking precedence of making a, a public announcement of which roads will be and will not be impacted. Tell you, just quickly looking at the map, the three roads to the east connect right to where the road, I mean, there's, there's a lot of availability. We'll see what comes back from Public Works. We have a very diligent team that does a consistent effort. It's not the practice of this board historically to go after someone's private property. Uh, I, I don't see that being the, the pathway that this project takes on.
What I heard just now, though, is if those people are willing to sell, then you will buy it and you will use it. That, that, you know, if there's people willing to sell property, yada, yada, that's what I just heard.
No, there, 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 there's more along the path and there may be other places where we can negotiate to buy property. Um, so I'm not saying we won't ever buy pu- private property from someone willing to sell. We're about to take up buying private property here on the agenda in just a few minutes. So there's times we will buy private property. What I'm telling you is, we don't have a practice of going and taking it, you know, except in very rare circumstances, and Green Drive is not one of those circumstances.
Mr. Ketchel, did you have a comment?
I was gonna add that I was at that workshop with Commissioner Goodwin and I also will tell you on record that I will not take Green Drive, okay? I'm familiar with the map, so let's, you know, I think you've gotten a really good answer today. Just, just let things settle. It'll be okay.
Thank you. Appreciate the time. No further speaker cards. Commissioners, we'll be moving to the consent agenda.
I'd like to pull five, please.
I'd like to pull four, please.
Twenty-five, please.
Make a motion to approve the consent agenda minus four, five, and twenty-five.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Goodwin. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye. Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Commissioner Ketchel?
So, thank you. It's my honor to read a proclamation today proclaiming Constitution Week, September seventeenth through the twenty-fifth. We have in the audience, uh, representatives from two Daughters of the American Revolution chapters, both West Florida, which is located in the Destin area, and Choctaw Hachi Bay, which is in the Fort Walton Beach area. Together, that's a combined about three hundred-plus women, so pretty strong. I'm gonna read this and then we'll have time for photographs. I don't know if you all have anything you want to add at the mic, but, okay. So, whereas September seventeen, twenty twenty-five marks the two-hundredth, thirtieth, eighth anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States by the Constitutional Convention in Independence Hall in Philadelphia on September seventeen, seventeen eighty-seven. And whereas the Board of Okaloosa County Commissioners Board finds it fitting and proper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document and its memorable signing by our nation's founding fathers and this year's anniversary, as well as to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate this occasion. And whereas July fourth, twenty twenty-six is the semi-quincentennial, try saying that, of the United States Declaration of Independence. And our county is preparing to celebrate this momentous occasion by planting liberty trees in every municipality, a patriotic musical concert to celebrate America, and at Northwest Florida State College, a November eleventh, twenty twenty, twenty-five Veterans Day celebration, and placement of an American two-fifty bench by the Snowden Horned Children of the American Revolution. And whereas the Board acknowledges Public Law nine fifteen guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America designating September seventeen through the twenty-third as Constitution Week, paying tribute to the actual crafting of the spirit of freedom in written form, join now with our Commander in Chief. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners that upon petition by the Choctaw Hachi Bay Chapter as well as the West Florida Chapter of the Daughters of the American Revolution DAR, they do hereby proclaim and recognize the week of September seventeenth through the twenty-third, twenty twenty-five, as United States Constitution Week and encourages the community to observe, observe this week with appropriate programs, ceremonies, recognitions, and special activities, and encourage citizens to read again the words that are set forth in this, these fabulous documents. I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer.
I'd like to say before we vote on this that the entire document of the Constitution of the United States Declaration of Independence will be, for the first time in its entirety, on display in Washington DC at the National Archives this month, which is such a great thing. I wish I was able to go up to see that entire document. I have seen each of them separately, but never all together. And I also want to just mention that I went to Philadelphia this last year with my husband and when you stand in that assembly room and, and you know what happened there, that is a sacred space for all Americans and it's such a wonderful experience. I encourage all of you to try to go up to see the Liberty Bell, but in particular, to stand in that room where these great men came together to form these documents.
Further comment? All in favor, signify with a aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Yes, please. Mr. Palmer?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Um, I have the, uh, honor to present a proclamation recognizing the month of September as sickle cell awareness month. Um, it's, it's, uh, hard to follow, Danielle. Thank you for, for sharing, uh, what you did and adding that personal touch, really, I think means a lot, so thank you for that. So with that, a proclamation recognizing the month of September as sickle cell awareness month. Whereas sickle cell disease is a genetic blood disorder that affects the red blood cells, causing them to take a sickle shape that can block blood flow, leading to serious health complications such as chronic pain, anemia, infections, organ damage, and reduced life expectancy. And whereas SED is most prevalent among individuals of African, Hispanic, and Mediterranean descent, though it can affect people of all races and ethnic backgrounds. And whereas advancements in research, treatment, and patient care have improved the quality of life for those living with SED, but significant challenges remain, including limited awareness, delayed diagnosis, and barriers to adequate care. And whereas the strength, courage, and resilience of individuals living with SED, known as sickle cell warriors, or sicklers, I think, uh, along with the unwavering dedication of caregivers, families, and healthcare providers deserve recognition and support. And whereas We-Rain Sickle Cell Corporation, a local nonprofit organization, serves as a vital resource in Okaloosa County and surrounding areas by raising awareness, educating the community, advocating for improved healthcare, and supporting patients and caregivers impacted by SED. And whereas September has been designated as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month to honor the lives of those affected, highlight the urgent need for research and resources, and encourage public and private efforts to improve outcomes for all who face this rare disease. And now, therefore, be it resolved that the Okaloosa County Board of County Commissioners that we do hereby proclaim and recognize September twenty twenty-five as National Sickle Cell Awareness Month. With that, I so move.
Motion by Commissioner Palmer, a second by Commissioner Ketchel. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, um, it takes a lot of courage, uh, Danella Gadsden, to come up here and speak. You have a wonderful spirit. You have so much light about you and the way you spoke and so positive. If we had more of that in our society altogether, it would be a lot better place. I, I don't know anything about you. I've never met you, but wow, you really touched me when you came up. Thank you.
All in favor, signify with a aye? Any opposed? That passes unanimously. Now, if you guys would like to come up, we'd like to have a picture. Mr. Goodman?
Speaker, or my microphone on here? So, item twenty-five is a, uh, request for, um, consideration of a resolution to designate September twenty through twenty-seven, twenty twenty-five as National Estuaries Week in Okaloosa County. I would move that we approve the resolution and if that passes, then, uh, if I could be recognized, just say a couple words.
Yes, sir. Motion by Commissioner Goodwin, a second by Commissioner Cox. Any further discussion? That's all in favor, signify with a aye?
Aye. And, Mr. Chairman, if I may, just really briefly, um, of course, this is an item brought forward by our Tourism Development Department, but, um, you know, there's been a lot of efforts, um, in, in our county, uh, working with some of our sister counties as well, uh, to establish an estuary program here in, in our region. I see, uh, Melinda Gates is here. Uh, she's with Walton County, but she stepped in to help the estuary program quite a bit. Um, I would say that Walton County donated her time, but Melinda's also donated her personal time to try to shore up that program because I think she's such a, a, a strong advocate, um, you know, for, for what that program can do here locally. Um, and I know others have, have been quite involved, but I wanted to recognize her and, and thank her for driving- for driving over to, to be here for that resolution. So I don't know, Mr. Coffey, if you had anything you wanted to add to that, but I mean, I believe that the resolution just kind of highlights the efforts that we put in over the past few years to try to stand that program up and really try to posture Okaloosa County to be able to do some projects and get some grant money and do some things to clean up our watershed.
Yeah, and there's some successes and I think Melinda's going to be posting some of those here pretty soon. So we'll make sure we get that out to the commission. Yes, sir. We have two public hearings today. The first is a public hearing to consider adoption of FY 2025 Capital Improvement Update Ordinance. Mr. Woodruff? Nope, sorry.
Mr. Chairman, my name is Stuart Campbell with the Growth Management Department. This agenda item is the second public hearing for consideration of an ordinance referencing the fiscal year 2025 Capital Improvement Update Ordinance, which specifically amends table 2.13.1 of the Okaloosa County Capital Improvement Element. In accordance with Chapter 163, the Florida statutes, local governments are required to undertake the annual review of the Capital Improvement Element to update the five-year capital improvement schedule. As part of the preparation of its annual budget, the Board of County Commissioners develops a capital improvement plan to guide expenditures over a five-year period and identifies the need for and location of public facilities in order to program projected revenue sources to fund the capital improvements over a 10-year period. The capital improvement projects which are necessary to ensure that adopted levels of service standards for public facilities will be achieved and maintained for the five-year period are adopted into the schedule of capital improvements. At the August 14th meeting, the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the FY 25, 2025 Capital Improvement Update Ordinance, amending table 2.13.1 Capital Improvement Element. This proposed agenda item was properly advertised in the Northwest Florida Daily Newspaper on September 2nd, and staff has not received any public comments or opposition to date. At this time, I'd like to enter the balance of my staff report into the record and respectfully request and recommend that the board approve the agenda item as presented. This concludes my presentation. There are staff from Public Works, Water and Sewer, and Growth Management are available to answer any questions you may have.
Have no speaker cards. Would anyone from the public desire to speak to this item? At this time, we'll close the public hearing. Commissioners, would anyone like to make a motion to approve or disapprove the adoption of the ordinance? A motion by Commissioner Cox.
I'll second. And I just want to say for those in the audience, thank you for your work on the Planning Commission. Everybody there is a volunteer for the most part, so we really thank thank everybody who worked so hard to put this together. I'm sort of waiting for somebody else to make the motion. I'm not opposed in any way. I just didn't think that I should jump in. There was no, nothing behind my quiet pause.
Any further comments? All in favor, signify with a aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously.
Thank you.
The next public hearing is to consider a request to vacate a portion of alleyway and Block 85 town site of Port Dixie. Mr. Bitterman. I looked up that time to see that it was Mr. Bitterman, Mr. Stewart.
No worries. Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners. Scott Bitterman with the Public Works Department. Today, we have a vacation request for you. It was properly noticed in the newspaper and signed. Mr. Gavin Wolf is here today for the proposed vacation. It's for the north half of the 20-foot wide alleyway lying south of and adjacent to lots 25 through 28, Block 85 of Port Dixie. The vacation measures 10 foot by 140 foot and per our policy, the applicant will pay $6,734 for the vacation based on the value of the adjacent non-homesteaded property. After considering public input, we recommend a motion to approve. Be glad to answer any questions after that.
Sure. Is there anyone from the public desiring to speak to this item? At this time, we'll close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion for approval. With the note that it's the Boyle's Amendment that brings that money into us.
That's right. That's right. A motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further discussion? All in favor, signify with a aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? This is unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bitterman. Ms. Fitzgerald.
Good afternoon. The first item that I have for your consideration is review and discussion regarding your proposed legislative priorities for 2026 session. Previously provided this draft agenda to each of you. A few of the notable changes from our last year's program include we added a new section to your program to call out the widening of State Road 85 as a primary county priority. So we've included information regarding that on page two, including our specific request for funding to advance that project. The second section of your program is our policy statement section. We have 10 policy statements there. A couple removed from last year, a couple of edits to that section. Notably on the bio solids rule amendments, our staff recently participated in a FAC sponsored event regarding bio solids and there is some concern about a statewide fix to some of that language. And so we're particularly concerned about how that might impact the panhandle. So our staff will closely follow that issue. In section three, we have seven appropriations requests for your consideration. We removed the ones from last year that were funded and added three new projects, two water and sewer projects, and then one is a design phase of the West Highway 98 Collector Road, which was previously funded for the pre-planning phase. We do have some time to make amendments to this policy. Our goal is to have it finalized prior to the delegation meeting scheduled for October 30th. But I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about what's in the program or consider the addition of any additional policy statements or appropriations requests.
I'll make a motion for approval and I'll wait up for discussion when I get a second. Ms. Fitzgerald, I really want to thank you for your hard work on this. You've obviously put a great deal of time into it. I don't know how successful we'll be. I know that the budgeting process over there is becoming a little more limited each year. So but it doesn't hurt to ask and to see what hits. And the governor's been very generous to us on the panhandle with not slicing it out of the budget. So thank you for your work, especially I'm pleased to see the mental health diversion program once again in there. That's been hugely successful for the court system. So thank you.
Commissioner Goodwin.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I just want to point out, you know, one of the, one of the policy statements that we've got in there, there's really two of them. There's this generalized support the Second Amendment. I think that's been in there for years probably and, you know, I have no problem with that. It's kind of generalized though. And then there's a correction to an inconsistency in Florida Statute 790.06513 relating to clarification about law enforcement corrections and service members between the ages of 19 and 20 years old to be able to legally purchase firearms. I would say, why don't we blend those two? Why don't we just take a stab at it? The first is, the First DCA has already made a ruling recently on the Second Amendment. It based itself on some clarification from a United States Supreme Court case about what the real test is. And I think we should encourage our legislature to go ahead and fix what was done with regard to what I consider, you know, an overreaction. Understandable why there was a feeling of a need to react at the time that dialed back and restricted those persons aged 18 to 18, 19, and 20 from being able to purchase any firearm, including long guns. And I think that's still on the books in this state. I think it's wrong. I think after what happened with the Pensacola case, it's not going to be long before someone does a very well thought out strategic nominal plaintiff operation like they did that just got the, got the open carry law struck. I mean, when you read the way that that was set up, I mean, lawyers dictated what the guy was going to do on the street. I mean, it was, it was very well done and they won. And I think somebody's going to do it to this. So why don't we just ask the legislature? Go ahead and fix it. You know what's wrong. Do it. Anyway, that's my thoughts. Not just, yes, fix the, fix the issue about, you know, law enforcement corrections, but what about everybody else out there 18 to 20 years old that also has Second Amendment rights that currently are trampled on by state law in Florida?
Any other comments? So the only one I would like to add over time, and I'm not sure how you want to do it, if you could bring something back, but not an emergency, but before we see them go into session at least, would be an overhaul of our homestead exemption law. It is written very poorly right now. As a value adjustment board, we faced issues over the last few years with folks that have split residency, if you will, or married couples that have multiple homes or varying states. And so I think there's room for cleanup in that from the legislature, specifically this year with the discussion about property taxes and the unright narrative of showing people how much better off they would be without some of those, whether it's homestead or not. That definitely needs to be cleaned. If, if we could add that, if there was the appetite of this commission to add that, then I think it would be helpful.
I think that's well said, Chairman. I agree with you that that's something that we need to look at can be cleaned up. So yes, I go along with that thought. But we'll be interested to see the whole discussion this year about property taxes. You know, I just say to citizens constantly, I understand that nobody likes to pay taxes, but you know, we, we've been very fiscally conservative in Okaloosa County. We've been very careful, never raised taxes since I've been on this board and Commissioner Goodwin's been on this board. But we do have to provide minimal services and that money has to come from somewhere. So it's going to be an interesting discussion to see what happens in Tallahassee this year.
Right now, we've noticed much debate and dispute with the homestead exemption, specifically with married couples living in two different places and the husband homesteading one and the wife homesteading the other. Any other additions, deletions, comments? Are we okay with this coming back? Great. So do you want us to vote for what you have today or can we wait until it just?
I think I have consensus on the edits that are needed and I'll work with Lynn, county attorney, to make sure I'm using the proper language and then we'll bring it back at the next meeting and I'll try to get with you individually, one-on-one ahead of time to make sure I'm including all of the feedback.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. And you have interlocal agreement.
Yes, this is a carryover from the prior meeting. Commissioner Goodwin had some specific questions just to ensure that we took a close look at what we were being asked to do with the replacement of the prior interlocal agreement with Escambia County and that we really did a look at the alternatives to that interlocal agreement as well as the, what I would consider to be a cost benefit analysis of that proposal. We did work very closely with the court administration to develop a summary, which is included in your packet, that I believe addresses some of the concerns. We also worked with, or all of the concerns. We also worked closely with our county IT director to, you know, to kind of find out, you know, what his opinion of the topic was, if he felt that, you know, we could provide that service with county employees. And without speaking on his behalf, his recommendation was to proceed with the interlocal agreement with Escambia County. We felt like it was the most cost efficient and cost effective and efficient manner of providing those court technology services. Just as a reminder to the board, in the same way that our departments present a detailed budget request each year, the court administration also does the same thing. And they sit down with Mr. Hofstadt and leadership to go through their budget request to justify their positions and also whenever they do bill us for the personnel costs, those billings will be detailed sufficient for us to ascertain the appropriateness of those costs. The court administration is here in the event of questions, but I'd be happy to try to answer anything you have.
So I'd like to make a motion for approval and hopefully Mr. Commissioner Goodwin's concerns have been answered. This is a cost savings, very effective way. I'm very much in support of it and I hope we can pass it today.
Motion by Commissioner Ketchel, a second by Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Goodwin, did you have?
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate that. Yes, I just wanted to say I appreciate the effort Ms. Fitzgerald's undertaken. She did get with Mr. Sam Benedetto. She got with Clerk's Office. I've been able to read those comments and the input. And so I feel now I have that information that was lacking last time so we can feel comfortable to move forward. I've also had the chance to sit down and also discuss, you know, from the finance and accounting side a little bit with our clerk. And I think that now we have assurances that this is a prudent move on behalf of the people of Okaloosa County. And so for those reasons, one, thank you for going through that extra exercise and two, I will vote in support.
Any additional comments? All in favor, signify with a aye? That passes unanimously. Mr. Autry.
Chase Autry, Deputy County Administrator. It's with great pleasure today that I would like to present Mr. Scott Bitterman PE as the appointment for the Public Works Director in Okaloosa County. I had the pleasure of meeting Scott a little over 10 years ago when he was moving down from Missouri, actually come to vacation here and I needed a county engineer at the time. He came in, filled in admirably and has become an integral part of our Public Works Department and learned our community with the vacancy of the Public Works Director position. The past six months, he's served as our interim. I think he's done a fine job and he will be a wonderful asset for the next adventure that is Public Works. I'm honored to have him as part of the team and to be able to recommend him to this board for the appointment of the permanent position of Public Works Director. His resume is attached. Should you have any questions, be happy to answer him and I seek your support.
Do you have a motion?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chairman, I would be happy to make a motion that we ratify Mr. Bitterman as the permanent Public Works Director. I think I called him Public Works Director earlier today and didn't call him interim Public Works Director. I went and tried to jinx you, Scott. You know, I guess I've kind of already got it in my mind that you're doing the job. So that's my motion.
It's been an honor to work with you last decade. You're more than capable of doing this job. We're so fortunate to have you as part of the Okaloosa team and you'll do a great job heading up public's work. Thank you for being here today, Mr. Bitterman.
I agree. And that brief moment of silence had nothing to do with your character or the work that you're doing. Just do better than the last guy.
And the guy before that.
Continuous improvement.
Continuous improvement is what we shoot for. That's right. That's right. All in favor, signify with a aye? That passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Stage.
Chairman and Commissioner.
Chairman Commissioners, good afternoon, Tracy Stage, Airport's Director, when I am for your consideration, for your pictures, say, speak better than a thousand words here. But what I wanted to show you is the current um, the current photo and the uh on the left hand side is our fuel farm, the way it sits today. With roughly a hundred and thirty thousand gallons of Jet A capacity and fifty thousand gallons of Mo gas. Um, if you recall in two thousand eighteen, with the growth of the the addition of Allegiant and the and the added service. And the increase to main lines, mainline aircraft, we added two uh, two tanks at that time, uh twenty five thousand gallons apiece. Bringing us to a a total of a hundred and hundred and thirty thousand gallons. We uh quickly uh obviously grew tremendously, double digit increases year after year. We had twenty percent increase in operations this past summer and we added Southwest Sun Country and Avilo since two thousand and eighteen. So obviously the capacity, uh, the demand is is there, uh, you'll see a tremendous amount of good background in the actual agenda item where. Uh, our peak Saturday, this this past summer season, we had one day uh where we actually uplifted ninety thousand gallons of Jet A fuel. So uh, th- that's a tremendous amount, uh, if you can imagine, that's eleven semi trucks at eight thousand gallons apiece. And the time it takes to offload into the fuel farm, then offload into the truck and then offload into the aircraft, aircraft, that's a lot of movement, right? It's a lot of work, so uh thankfully, we were able to allocate some uh our to our capital improvement program and our master plan. We're gonna add four additional tanks with your approval today, we designed the project, bid the project, received two bids. Uh, one responsive bid through uh MDM contractors in the amount of uh. Four million twenty eight thousand fifty one dollars and fourteen cents to add four additional twenty thousand, sorry, thirty thousand gallon tanks. Each to nearly double our entire capacity of the farm to two hundred and fifty thousand, which is that picture on the right, that rendering there. So you'll see, the only, the only difference in that rendering is the four tanks on the left will actually be vertical tanks. Thirty thousand gallons apiece versus horizontal tanks, so uh, be happy to answer any questions, uh, looking forward to this project. Uh, the the department requests award to construction contract, MDM Services Incorporated in the amount of four million twenty eight thousand fifty one dollars and fourteen cents. To expand our farm and authorize the chairman to sign the contract.
Chairman, I'll be happy to make the motion with additional comments. Mr. Stage, um, this is really needed because the size of the airplanes that we're bringing in, the craft are so much larger now because everybody wants to come here. Are we gonna be able to pay cash for this?
Cash, uh.
Well, in other words, we're not going into debt to do this, right?
Oh, no, ma'am, we got a grant that actually the board has already preapproved, uh, we pinned it pending FAs. Uh, disbursement of that grant, which we came to this war, I believe it was in May, received a preapproval of the grant acceptance in the amount of. Three million five hundred forty one thousand three hundred sixty two dollars from the FA, uh, split it in ninety ten, ninety ten percentage ratio. And then an FDOT grant that we received, uh, fifty fifty at a million dollars, so um, it is budgeted in in this year's uh airport's budget for our local share match.
So, so I was aware of that, but I wanted to make sure we brought that out publicly because that's a lot of money. And I'm very proud of the fact that we have a debt free airport system, all three, and I'm just so proud of you for that and the work that this. Commission has done and other commissions to make that happen, that's an unusual thing, a lot of, a lot of airports have debt.
It's very, very competitive on the top.
We're very blessed, thank you for the good work you continue to do and your staff as well.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Does the rendering show pretty accurate, the fence line will go all the way over to the lot that's used by the. Rideshare drivers?
Yes, sir. And that that uh rideshare lot, um, that's not its official permanent term. Um, that's just an overflow lot that we're utilizing for rideshare at the current moment.
All in favor signify with a I. It passes unanimously, thank you, Mr. Sage.
Thank you, Chairman, Commissioner.
Mr. Bitterman.
Well, hello again, hello again, Commissioners, uh, Scott Bitterman with the Public Works Department, I've got two items for you to consider today. Uh, the first item is the construction contract to build a two and a half mile long path in the Niceville area. The proposed path is on College Boulevard from Palm Drive to Forest Road and on Forest Road from College Boulevard to Rocky Bayou Drive. Uh, I do want to point out that this path is going to be ten feet wide, which is a correction from the twelve feet that's listed in your packet. Um, this is yet another project that's delivered with the infrastructure SRTAX and it's combined with the legislative priorities approved by this board. The cost of the construction will be split fifty fifty and the contract price is one point seven million. I recommend a motion to approve the contract with CW Roberts for construction of the College Boulevard Forest Road Multi Use Path. In the amount of one million seven hundred twenty thousand eight hundred thirty dollars and ninety two cents, be glad to answer any questions.
Motion by Commissioner Palmer, a second by Commissioner Cox.
I just like to make one comment, CW Roberts does a lot of work for us, um, they just finished the bike path, uh, which is from bridge to bridge. They do a lot of the asphalt work at the um airport, really love that company, I have to say that, I want to say that publicly, especially for the new commissioners that may not realize. We know we have other choices, they continually deliver a very good product.
They seem to be great partners and it is definitely uh, the the fact that we pay our bills and it seems at a premium sometimes is definitely part of that rationale, so. Any other comments? All in favor signify with a I. This is unanimously, your second item.
Yes, sir, um, the second item is funding from SRTAX for a channel study of Gap Creek and you can see the the exhibit there. Uh, the Gap Creek Channel Inventory and Planning Study was listed among the board's legislative priorities in the twenty twenty five session. Uh, the state will match the county SRTAX funding at fifty fifty, uh, this was not a project that was on the original SRTAX needs list, but the SRTAX. Committee, they met last month and they see the value in leveraging our money. Uh, we'll be able to get, you know, double the amount of money and we'll be able to make this study. Um, the study will provide a physical assessment of Gap Creek between Jeanquill Avenue and Beal Parkway. Here, the creek disappears from view and is bounded by private property. Possible recommendations from the study could be help residents clean up fallen trees that are blocking the creek flow or it could identify some fences that. Uh, pose no problem on a a nice day like today, but if it's raining and the creek leaves its banks, perhaps the fence blocks the flow of the river. Uh, it can identify stormwater structures that need filters to clean the water. Uh, and it will also definitely map the channel and advise what environmental projects could improve the flow of Gap Creek. So what we do is we recommend a motion to approve the allocation of fiscal year twenty five reserves in the amount of twenty five thousand or two hundred and fifty thousand, excuse me. Is a match to the state appropriation grant for the Gap Creek Channel Planning Study and to approve the budget transfer. Be glad to answer any questions.
Mr. Hofstadt?
I I just want to add to what Scott's saying, I I will tell you, this system has been a problem for the fifteen years I've been with the county. And it predates my time with the county when I was with the city as well, because it's multi jurisdictional between Fort Walton and unincorporated Okaloosa County. It greatly impacts the Lovejoy Community, they've been after this project for some time, so. Glad that Scott and his team were able to work this through SRTAX because I I do believe it's much needed and I think Commissioner Goodwin would would echo that sentiment.
Commissioner Goodwin?
Uh, yeah, yes, Mr. uh Commissioner, um, if I could, I'll just make a motion to approve, um, and kind of, you know, um. Taking a cue from Mr. Hofstadt's comments, I'll I'll say it is a uh, it it's an area of significant concern for quite a large uh watershed. Um, we've been looking at the Gap Creek area, um, you know, extensively for a number of years and. Predating my time and I I I think that once upon a time I even saw a, uh, you know, a daily news article probably from twenty years ago. Where Mr. Hofstad was working for the city trying to get something done in Gap Creek, it's a, it's a hard road and um. It's a, it's one that's not simple, it's a complex issue back there, um, but I think this is a, this is the next step in trying to do something with it. It, like Mr. Hofstad said, it's multi jurisdictional, you've got not just city, county, you've got DEP, you've got the Army Corps of Engineers, you've got conservation easements, you've got. Failing old neighborhood infrastructure that's that's dumping into this, you've got, um, you know, I've potentially stuff coming from the industrial, uh, you know, the industrial area. In the city, maybe, maybe not, I know there's been some studies on that, um, it just, it's a, it's a huge issue for two things, I really. Uh, I hope this will help address not, you know, water, you know, quantity to help mitigate flooding, because that's been a real problem, flooding people's houses is, you know, I mean, that's critical. But also the water quality that I think you mentioned, Mr. Bitterman, about whether or not we can find some additional treatment opportunities and things like that. So I think if if this helps on those two things, um, it's well worth uh, well worth the effort and um, obviously, you know, this um. This is just to be the tip of the iceberg, probably about actually, you know, doing some work to really fix it, but this is how we get started, so. I make the motion, thanks for letting me have argument before I had a second, but um, if hopefully I'll I'll get a second for this one, sure.
I'll second it with a comment here, so I want to thank Commissioner Goodwin for bringing this forward, um, this has been a huge issue ever since we took our seats. And culminated with the recent blowout, not a sinkhole on Beal, I've been told over and over again, not a sinkhole. Jason won't look up, he's, he's the one that tells us we don't have any sinkholes, once you make the turn on seventy five, there's no sinkholes because of the way our our topography is, is that true?
Our geology, yes.
Yes, there you go, so uh, anyway, this is something that really needs, it affects a lot of people throughout a large neighborhood, so I uh, thank you for bringing this forward, Commissioner.
Any additional comments? All in favor signify with a I. It passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Bitterman.
Thank you.
Mr. Tomaczek, are there any additional public comment cards? Commissioner Palmer. Commissioner Ketchel.
So I'll just mention a couple of things, um. You heard today about the America Two Fifty, there's a lot happening in Okaloosa County as we get ready to celebrate. We did apply for a grant through the governor's office, we hope to be able to get that with Northwest Florida State College, to have a very patriotic concert at the college. On November eleventh, we will unveil those two new statues and that will be at one o'clock, there's many Veteran Day celebrations to choose from, but this will be very special. And there will be some benches placed, one with Snowden Horn, was, I forgot to say earlier that Ms. Pratt, raise your hand, Kristy. Um, she's an amazing retired teacher that has taken young people, she has over forty people, children now, how many do you have, forty one? Forty four children who are part of the uh American Revolution group called Snowden Horn. Who uh have are learning things that they won't learn until civics, till eighth grade or ninth grade, so, and they're having actual hands on experience, they will be present. To sign the Pledge of Allegiance again, and um, so thank you all for being here today, I just wanted to mention that, November eleventh, one o'clock at the convention center.
Ms. Fitzgerald, during my time, I I I have one thing that I'd like for you to pencil to add and then we can discuss when you bring it back, if that's okay. We're taking the item up with Floor Association of Counties, I was on Orange County yesterday, there are another county that operates their own jail. And so um, not, not every county in Florida, uh, the commission has the jail, most of them are under the sheriff, but there's nearly a dozen that are under the commission. Uh, one issue is with um state rules regarding Medicaid and people that are incarcerated. I I will get you the language so that you can um, as you see fit, uh, share that potentially and get the opinion of the other commissioners to see if it's something that we would entertain. Within our uh priorities, but I know that it is coming from multiple fronts. And it would probably be good because it affects us greatly, uh, it, one little change example, um, the federal government covers people twenty four hour plus that are in hospitalized. But the state says no to that, and so that's just one, one change that's able to be altered, to be able to let uh some of that. Uh, money covers, when someone has Medicaid and they are incarcerated, they lose that benefit, it's uh frozen immediately, and so. It becomes strictly the county's obligation to cover the medical expenses. So it's not whether or not they are uh convicted or found guilty or sentenced yet, it's merely just on being incarcerated. So there's some language that that could be, could be adjusted, that would be uh, better operationally for both sides. Commissioner Goodwin.
Nothing further today, thank you, Chairman.
Sure, Commissioner Cox.
I have nothing further.
Meeting's adjourned.
Welcome to the public hearing budget agenda of Okaloosa County Board of Commissioners. Mr. Hofstadter.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have been told by multiple people a tremendous efficiency with which Ms. Fitzgerald went through the budget hearing on the first one and I've been threatened with having my budget duties pulled if I don't follow suit. So with that, I just need to walk through some initial language, the three motions that are needed today. The first motion before you is going to be for the aggregate millage rate. The proposed aggregate millage rate matches last year's rate, 3.9613 mills, which is an increase of 3.72 mills over the rollback rate of 3.8193 mills. Also, the county property tax millage is proposed at 3.8308 mills, which exceeds the rollback rate of 3.6825 mills by 4%. The proposed MSTU millage before you is the rollback rate of .288 mills, so we will be rolling that back this year. And the last motion we'll need from the board is approval of the overall budget, all-inclusive across all funds. That's $687,249,428. And with that, Mr. Chairman, I'll turn it back to you for public comment, and those are the three motions we'll be asking from the board today.
Thank you. FY 2526, final county-wide millage rate resolution. Commissioners?
Motion for approval?
A motion by Commissioner Ketchel, second by Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? All in favor signify with a "I." FY 2526, final MSTU millage rate resolution. Motion by Commissioner Palmer, second by Commissioner Ketchel. Any further discussion? All in favor signify with a "I." Imposed? Passes unanimously. FY 2526, final budget resolution. Motion by Commissioner Cox, second by Commissioner Palmer. Any further comments? All in favor signify with a "I," and that passes unanimously.
Mr. Chairman, just very briefly, again, we want to thank this board for your guidance and leadership in developing this budget. For me, this is my 11th year working with you to pull a budget together. You continue to hold the line on the tax burden for the citizens of this county. That is greatly appreciated. This staff out here does an amazing job each year working with my office and pulling these budgets together. So with that, we sincerely thank this board again for your guidance and leadership.
Meeting is adjourned.